... of the United States of America and is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
Okay, so welcome to the Planning Commissioning Commission. This is the meeting of the Morrison County Planning Commission. The commission is made up of citizens from the five Commissioner districts of the county and one county commissioner. The purpose of this commission is to oversee the preparation, to oversee the preparation of the Morrison County land use controls, hear and review applications, and offer recommendations for conditional use permits, interim use permits, subdivision plat approval, planned unit developments, rezones, and other matters to be considered by it under the Morrison County Land Use Control Ordinance. Our powers are established in state statute chapters 394.21 to 394.37. Conditional uses and interim uses are recommended for approval upon a showing by an applicant that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied. All questions must be answered in affirmative in order for the planning commission to recommend approval for a CUP or an IUP unless conditions can be attached that bring the proposal into compliance and mitigate the negative finding of facts. Condition and restrictions may be imposed by the planning commission as deemed necessary to protect the public interest. After your public hearing is complete, you may leave if you wish. So we have one agenda item tonight, one item on the agenda tonight on the planning commission side, and that is Julie Likeval. So at this time, Julie, if you'd want to come up and sit here at the table, state your name for the record when you get seated, please.
Julie Likeval?
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we have Julie Likeval from 17147 Grouse Road, Little Falls, Minnesota. After-the-fact application for an interim use permit for a home extended business to continue to use good, to continue a used goods store located in point of government lot four, section five, township 129, range 29, Green Prairie Township. So at this time, I think I'll move on and ask Amy for her staff report.
You bet, Mr. Chair, and I just want to note that we do have one commissioner joining us on Teams tonight, so it'll be really important to speak into your microphone so he can hear what's going on. So again, this is an application for an after-the-fact interim use permit to continue a home extended business located in sections five and six of Green Prairie Township. The ordinance reference for this request is section 606.8 of the Morrison County Land Use Control Ordinance, and that requires an interim use permit for home extended businesses. Here's a plat map of Green Prairie Township, and the red dots is the location of the parcel. And then here is the after-the-fact interim use permit request received from the applicant, and then a site drawing also provided by the applicant. And then here's an aerial photo of the property. All of the parcels that we're talking about tonight are highlighted in either blue or yellow. And then here's some oblique imagery of the parcels. The applicant lives on this 5.26 acre property, and it's made up of four parcels. A land use permit was granted in August of 2021 for the construction of a 30 by 56 pole shed for personal storage, and then here is the permit. In October 2021, the Land Services Department received a complaint that the property owner was holding a perpetual garage sale with loads of items and people constantly coming in and out of the property. Land Services staff followed up and determined that an unpermitted home extended business was being operated out of the newly constructed shed on the property. And then here's the violation letter that was sent. The applicant attended a development review team meeting on March 28, 2022, to discuss permitting the use. During that meeting, the applicant stated that she receives donations of furniture, home goods, and clothing to make it available to area families in need. She stated that several agencies refer families to her. Due to the amount of clothing and other items, she also began to hold garage sales for the public to shop. This revenue from those sales offset some of the operating expenses. And then here is kind of a flyer that is provided for the business. The applicant is requesting an after-the-fact interim use permit to continue the home extended business, specifically a used goods store on the property. The property is served by Grouse Road, which is also known as County Road 213, and it's a paved county road. The property is within a rural residential neighborhood, and to the east is the Mississippi River. So here's kind of a dialed-out aerial photograph of the neighborhood. And then here's some oblique image, imagery of the neighborhood as well. And then here are the performance standards for home extended businesses. I'm not going to go through all of those, but they're here in case you want to refer to those. The applicant submitted a letter of support from Oasis Central Minnesota within the application that was sent to you already within your packet, and then a reminder that interim use permits must be conditioned with an end date. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is local economic development, goal C1, objective 1, objective 8, and then goal C2, objectives 1, 2, and 4, 7, 14, and 19. 123 notices were sent, four comments were received prior to the public hearing. This is in addition to the letter of support that you already read from Oasis. So I will read those comments now. So the first comment is from Steve Lemire. Said, "I am sending this email in relation to the public hearing for Julie Likeval at 17147 Grouse Road in Little Falls, Minnesota. Last year, there was an ongoing garage sale at that address for much of the summer. I personally did not like the situation as it was. At times, there were a good number of cars parked on Grouse Road to the point that two cars meeting together on Grouse Road could not get through. There was also one time where a pickup pulled out of the driveway with a load of stuff and didn't see me coming, and there was nearly a collision. I'm not sure what Julie's business plan is, but having people park on the road every day of the week is not a safe situation in a residential area. I moved to this residential neighborhood in 1996 because there was a minimal amount of traffic, especially on weekends. The more traffic, the more chance for something bad to happen. If it would be open three to four days a month, I would not object, but a perpetual garage sale type business, I would be opposed to." The next comment, excuse me, is from Julie Lemire, and this, so this one is, "Please accept this letter to share my views with you and my concerns regarding the interim use permit you are considering for Mrs. Likeval. We have been dealing with Mrs. Likeval's continuous garage sale for quite some time now. These garage sales have been for multiple days of the week, for multiple months, being held in her front yard. During this time, we have been dealing with continuous traffic using our driveway for a turnaround. There have been multiple vehicles parking along the county road causing safety concerns with vehicles traveling at 50 to 55 miles per hour. The continuous use of multiple garage sale signs within the road right-ofways at multiple locations and both sides of the road and at intersections is wrong." Under 1211.3 in the Morrison County Land Use Ordinance, item C said, "You shall not create noise noticeable outside the accessory structure." Item E, "No sign other than one non-illuminated nameplate containing not more than 12 square feet in area shall be allowed. The sign must be located on the property of the business subject to setback requirements." And H, "Parking for employees and customers must be provided off-street. We are zoned rural residential, which is generally residential development and is rural in character. It is intended to allow traditional activities that do not degrade the rural character. If you decide to allow this to happen, please consider to protect the rural character of our neighborhood, but putting on some conditions besides the enforcement of the above ordinance. One, no long-term garage sale sign, garage sale in the front lawn. Two, if you feel the need to approve this IUP, please consider that it should only be granted for one or two years. No one knows what it will be like in the future. Three, parking should be provided and should not be allowed on the front lawn, nor should anyone be using the neighbor's yard and driveway as an exit from the property. The parking area should be designated as per ordinance. Four, there should be days and times of operation defined. The increased traffic, not just during the hours of posted operation for deliveries or whatever might be happening, also interrupt the peaceful mornings and evenings, especially during the summer months. We built a home next door to the home I grew up in. The land was owned by my great-grandparents prior to that. I feel having this business right next door is taking away from what I love and what I grew up with living in the country. The houses along this small stretch of road are close together. We all hear, smell, and are affected by what each other is doing on their property. I understand and appreciate the tough decisions you, as the planning commission, make, and I appreciate you allowing me to share my concerns." We also received, let's see, an email from Matt and Jackie Crowder. "To the planning committee, I am writing with my concerns on the Julie Likeval permit. We have lived out here for over 40 years in a nice, quiet rural residential area. After years of having Julie have a garage sale with signs all over every day, it was horrible. Cars are all over the roadway, 60 miles per hour on the road with cars parked both sides of the road. Very dangerous. There were multiple close calls, people driving in our yards, on our lawns. It was horrible. Our privacy is gone. This is a residential area, not industrial. There is noise and smells and even semi-trailers, wood piles, and strange people in our neighborhood. It has ruined a very close neighborhood of houses. The houses are too close for having a business in the center of it all. This is nothing personal on Julie, but we are trying to protect our way of life and our property. We feel this is just wrong to have out here." And then we also received a phone call from Rebecca Fulford, and she stated that she is opposed to the after-the-fact used goods store, and that she stated she was also going to attend in person. So those are the comments, and then here are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
So we had four letters, one email, and one phone call. Is that how it tallies up? Or four, three letters and one email?
Three letters.
Okay, one email.
One phone call.
And one email.
Well, there are three emails.
Okay.
And one, this is just.
Just a phone call.
From the phone call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, would the applicant have anything to add? Or maybe explain your whole situation, get right into it? If you could go ahead.
Sure, absolutely. Can you hear me okay? So my name is Julie, and I'm a mental health professional. I've been in the field for 30 years, and when the pandemic started, I made myself completely available to volunteer to meet needs of the community. So what we learn is, before you can really work with somebody on their relationship skills or employment skills, is they have to have their basic needs met. You need housing, you need shelter, you need clothing. And so anyway, since the pandemic started, I've been volunteering my time. I've been taking people to medical appointments. I've been working as backup for the crisis line, doing support calls. And, you know, it's easily that I fielded 100 calls a month, just people needing support. I took my parent out of a nursing home. I don't know what to do. Just all sorts of things that came up. Kids not being able to go to school because of the pandemic, and parents losing their job because they had to be home with their kids. So all sorts of situations. But the one thing that, that was the continual need is where can people go to get the everyday things that they needed? And so the, the first summer, I had a garage sale at 301 West Broadway. A family decided to donate their estate, so I did a garage sale there for the summer. It was a wonderful, wonderful place for people that were feeling really isolated to come out and shop. It's open air. It was make an offer, pay what you can. In that first summer, we distributed about $7,500 to people who had needs that were falling through the cracks. The second year, which was last summer, I held a garage sale at my house, and we held it for about 30 days, and we did post garage sale signs. I really respect my neighbors' comments. One of my concerns was the, the parking on the street, and no matter how much I tried to wave them in, it happened, and I was very, very concerned about that. Another thing that really tugged on me is when Oasis and Hands of Hope were the two agencies in town that repeatedly would send people my way, that they had a family who was starting all over, and they needed furniture, they needed clothes. And that was fine when I was running the garage sale. I could say, "Here's a size 32 pair of pants, a size 10 pair of shoes." But when that call came in, when things were boxed up, I couldn't help them. And here I had all these things that were boxed. So I got the building permit, and I really didn't know where this would go because it's been an evolution. So my commitment to do volunteer work is endless, but does it need to be this ongoing garage sale? I don't know. So I put up this building with the thought that we're going to store, and we're going to sort, and we're going to have a perpetual garage sale if that's allowed. Am I going to have volunteers show up? Are we going to be able to cover expenses? What, what's the need? So I didn't even think that I would need a conditional use permit because this is charity, and my accountant had retired, so I lost the person to go to. And my new accountant is saying, "Julie, we'll deal with that after tax season," which I'm sure you can all appreciate. So the conversations I'm having now are about what, what is this turning into? And Hands of Hope and Oasis do amazing work. I've also gotten calls from housing managers that say, "You know what? We just had three people that got their apartments, and their funding is arranged, but they're only showing up with the clothes on their back." Well, how do you make a start with not having the basics? So in talking to Rose, Rose explained to me that the closest place for them to get essential items for free would be Salem West in Deerwood, and that she almost has to beg to let somebody come because they're mean, they have that for their own community. And if that person is already homeless and having issues, they're probably not going to have a ride to Deerwood to pick up free furniture to get back. So I understand that this is really rare to do this in a rural area, and is it ideal? Absolutely not. My hope was, if we're doing it in the backyard, and we do have parking for the volunteers, and if we can ensure that the roadway is safe and I don't have nuisance in the front yard, because that was a lot of work for me, bringing things out in the morning, put things away at night, and I really tried to keep things neat, but I couldn't control what the consumers were doing. So unless I'm missing resources that are available in Morrison County, I think that we have a moral obligation to say, "How do we serve the needs?" And May 31, rent help is done for people, and we are going to have a housing crisis like we've never seen, and we're going to have people with just really down and out. And we also have, you know, a whole retirement community that's moving into nursing homes, assisted living, and, you know, I'm, I've helped lots and lots of families move because they don't have a place to go with their things, especially when other thrift stores were turning down donations because they were full. So in doing this, a bigger part of it has been, you know, we're meeting the essential need for the community. We're giving volunteers a really meaningful, meaningful job to do, and we're supporting two incredible agencies in our community, along with Head Start and Social Services and Red Cross and all the other people that have been referring to me. I hope that we can come to some agreements where it can continue. If you tell me no, I'll know that God really does want me to retire, and (laugh) but I hope that's not the case. I think we have a tremendous unmet need, and somehow we need to meet that. I'm hoping that labor love is the way. I certainly apologize that I missed a step. Sincerely, I talked to some business people, and they're like, "Julie, it's charitable. It's, you know, you're evolving. It's so..." And I didn't have my accountant to go to to say exactly what do I do? So again, I'm, I'm not one to, to try to be devious. I, as soon as I was told that there was an issue, I, you know, it's posted on our, our Facebook page that we're closed, and certainly have been allowing people to come in for word-of-mouth shopping and the charity. Since February 1st, we've had 33 referrals come out. So are you going to see people in and out of my yard? Yeah, and a lot of those referrals will come out the first time, a pickup close, things that can fit in their car, and then the second time, you know, actually with a pickup or a place to, to take their furniture. A lot of people are excited about it. It's been a win-win. People know that, that their donations are being recycled. You know, it certainly has been charitable so far. It's been all volunteer work. If we can continue, I would see that we would hire employees because my mouth is really dry, because I physically can't do that amount of lifting and.
Do you want some water?
I would love some water. So I would see that, you know, just to cover the hours and to pick up and drop off, that I need more manpower. So, so I could see this definitely turning into employees. You know, I want to keep peace with my neighbors, so certainly want to respect their wishes and, and see if we can work something out.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back to you. We'll have some questions for you and stuff, and we'll also have some public comment here in a little bit. But at this time, I'm going to ask if the planning commission has any questions or comments. So maybe I'll start, Dave, you first down there, if you have anything.
Have you talked to your neighbors? Are there, are there any chance of, of, we heard the letters, I heard what was written.
Well, I talked to the neighbors who are closest to me, which are Dick and Helen Claus, and they can actually see, you know, there's, there's trees and hedges, but she said, "You know what? We're, we're really happy about what you're doing." She says, "We have absolutely no problem with it whatsoever." My neighbor to the north, my understanding is her full-time residence is in the metro area, and I really don't see her around very much. My assumption was that Matt and Jackie and the Lemires were far enough away that I didn't reach out and make contact. In hindsight, I probably should have. I know Jackie has referred to me as, as the woman who helps everyone, so, you know, we've certainly had friendly conversations, so I just.
It'd be good if the neighborhood could be part of what you're doing.
I would love that. I would love that. Yeah, I certainly don't want to create any strife whatsoever.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
You're good, Dave? You're good. Okay, go ahead, Brent.
Julie, could you tell me what your, really what your business plan is there? What your hours of operation might likely look like? And also, is this a seven-day-a-week planned venture? Are you going to have hours of operation? I'd like to hear and understand that a little better.
Well, we were blessed. There was a store that closed out in St. Cloud and practically gave us shelving and, and display racks. Now, that made it, instead of looking like a garage sale, it really did make us look like a thrift store. Once those shelves came in, they were stored and holding for it at a friend's house. And then once the building was done, they brought the shelving in. It's like, oh my God, this no longer looks like a garage sale. This looks like a thrift store. And the amount of merchandise coming in, we can keep it well stocked. I would like the hours of operation to be Tuesday through Friday, nine to five Saturdays, nine to three, and then those are winter hours. In the summer, I'd like to open at eight and do eight to five Tuesday through Friday and eight to three on Saturdays. And as far as a business plan is, I talked to my accountant just briefly, and I said, "What do I do here? This is evolving into something that's more than charitable." You know, I, so he's, he said, "Julie, it's not going to be a problem to set up a nonprofit." And that he would connect me with somebody from his accountant's office to do that. So then we would, would be getting the business set up as a nonprofit.
Anything else, Brent?
That's it for now.
Okay. Marvin, you have something?
Mr. Chair. A few questions. You talked about the amount of people that have stopped there. How, how, how many people per day or per week would you save?
Well, every day, I have about four volunteers coming out. So, you know, that's four vehicles in and out right there. And then, you know, we really have not done much, if any, advertising as of late. So I don't think there's been more than two people just coming to shop a day. And remember that our average for people that, that other organizations are sending to me are averaging about four a week. So if you're saying, "How many cars in and out every day? Maybe six, seven." But once we start advertising, I think that will increase. It's, it's a beautiful store, beautiful prices, wonderful mission, you know? So I do need to be prepared that, that, that'll increase.
So you had commented that you have some private parking.
I do.
How many vehicles does they hold?
I think I could easily have 15 vehicles comfortably parked in the yard.
Okay, so legitimate complaints from the neighbor, the safety ones in which you've obviously would, you, you were concerned about. Is there a chance, I noticed by your lot, you have a fairly, well, you've got a little over five acres back there. Is it possible that you could put a larger parking area in that back lot to keep these vehicles off the road?
Yeah, and we've been working on that. You know, we've taken down some trees just to make sure it would be safe for people to get back there. And, you know, that's where the bulk of the parking will be, as well as in front of the pole barn. I think by putting it in the back, we're going to eliminate people needing to park on the road because it would make absolutely no sense for them to park on the road. They can't even see the building. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dave Stish?
Well, thanks for the review of all of that. This is the Planning Commission. We represent the county, each one of us from a different district, and our job, I guess it is, is to, for CUPs, conditional use permits, IUPs, interim use permits, zoning. It's about land use. It's not about, you know, what you reviewed is, you know, Eklund, there's nobody that could argue the need. Myself, I'm familiar with Salem West up in Deerwood. I've brought stuff there. That's a long ways to go to donate furniture. Recently, we've been just going to Boys and Girls Club with, with her, use things like that. The, if I were to look at the Rural Residential District, each of the districts has a purpose and a definition as to what belongs there. And the purpose of the Rural Residential District is promote and protect areas which have low density, generally residential development, are essentially rural in character. It is intended to allow traditional rural activities such as ag, forestry, home businesses, and occupations in manners that do not degrade the rural character of the area. The letter that you received notifying you that you needed a, you know, that you were in violation and that you needed interim use permit, if you were to proceed, gave you the option of shutting down also. Obviously, you took the interim use permit option. There's a definition of a home extended business, which is allowed in rural residential and is allowed in ag. Home extended business is an occupation or profession engaged in by the occupant of the dwelling unit that is carried out in a necessary structure, so far so good, that is clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the premises and does not change the character of the principal use. The principal use being rural residential, which I think has been pointed out quite well by several of your neighbors. I'm sure we're going to be getting testimony tonight about the good works that are being done, and I don't think anybody up here is going to argue with that or the need. But it's, our job is.
Sure, I understand.
Placement.
Yeah.
Does this fit? Right, and we will have to answer, could you put up the criteria questions? Right, and we will have to answer, could you put up the criteria questions, Amy? Okay, again, what we do tonight is, um, we will make a, we will make a recommendation to the planning, or to the commissioners. Okay, we'll recommend to deny, approve. If we, uh, recommend to approve, we might add conditions that would make us, make it us able to answer some of these questions or basically all of these questions with a yes. So every one of those questions, we have to filter through land use ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance, the purpose of the zoning district. And I can come up with a no on every one of those questions and feel that I've best served the role that I've been asked to serve as, uh, on this board, uh, planning commission. However, if there were conditions that could allow me to answer yes to some, I'm not speaking for anybody else here, just for me, then possibly, um, in your discussion, um, you said something about since February, I don't know if it's since February to now, but there were thirty-three vouchers?
About thirty-three individuals referred for
Or referrals, okay. Are they given voucher, vouchers when they're referred or are they just names that are passed on to you? How does that work?
Well, oftentimes, uh, Rose will call and say, you know, we placed somebody in a, in a home, they need furniture. I gave them your number. It's gotten so frequent that oftentimes people will come and say, Rose referred me and I know I can, I can, um, confirm with her. We've had the TCC head start, those employees that go out into the homes, they themselves come and they'll say, you know, we need a crib, we need a playpen, we need, you know, and then, you know what? There is enough of everything for everyone. Go pick out what you need. So...
I guess what I'm getting at is you could operate on referrals, possibly.
Well, but then there's no income flow and that's my dilemma.
Okay. Then you were talking about charitable organizations. I've been involved with several. Charitable organizations are set up so they can accept donations.
Right, and I really can't apply for any grants or other things until I get that nonprofit status. And with the whole accountant and all sorts of, so, once I get that, I think I could. I could get some grants for operating expenses.
Sure.
Am I missing the question?
Yes, yes, you are.
I'm sorry, tell me.
No, I, I, I'm probably asking too many questions. I don't wanna do that either and not allow anybody else any time, but
I just feel like I missed the answer to it.
Salem West.
Yes.
They are in a commercial, commercially zoned area. I'm sure they're in downtown Deerwood. And that's the place for what you are proposing and what you've been offering. Employees, you know, a home extended business, I'm, I'm sure it's limited to us five employees, you know, um...
And up until now, we've, we've all had, it's just been volunteers, no employees.
Volunteer employee fine line as to what they really are, you know? But, okay, uh, those are the points I'd like to make. It's not about you, you know? It's not about what you're trying to do, uh, and the people you serve. Um, it's about the location. It's about the volume of, of traffic. It's about all of those things.
I trust the process. You, all of you know what this is and it, it is what it is. I trust the process.
Okay, thank you.
You done, babe?
Who knows?
Okay. We'll go through some of this here. I got some notes everywhere here, but, uh, okay, one of the things I wanna allude to, you kinda somewhat asked the question when you gave your opening statement. You didn't know if your place is the right place to have this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? We have a clothing store out in Ag. So I don't know why we don't have a used clothing store basically in rural, in rural. So I would say it's probably fine there, but it has to meet some other criterias. Some of the concerns that your neighbors have, I probably have too, so. One is, what's the speed limit on that road? Do you know?
Think past my house. It's supposed to be forty-five.
Okay. So then if people are going sixty miles an hour, we'll probably, that isn't your fault, but we have to...
It's a story about that. My husband Art, I've been widowed now six years. He called to complain about that and guess who the first person picked up was? So, um, yeah, it, there's a slowdown point and, you know, it, it's easy to go too fast there and I've been guilty of that and I've been reminded.
Okay, so one concern, and I would have that, I have that when they just have garage sales, let alone a business, 'cause that's what we're looking at as a business, not garage sale, okay?
Right.
Is no parking on the road.
Absolutely.
You know, so, um, we have to address that issue so that it's safe for not only your neighbors, but everybody that travels that road. So I don't know if this would happen, if she'd be able to put a sign at the end of her driveway that says, no parking on the road or is that something we would check with the county to see if they could put signs in that area? Or is that not our responsibility?
When it comes to using the county road right-of-way for, for signage, that would have to absolutely be in concert with the Public Works Department. The, the point of a home extended business though is to still maintain that residential character, so so that's why we allow one sign. One of the things I would point out is I think it's the nature of if something is being advertised as a garage sale, as a garage sailor myself, I don't like to park in the driveway because I don't wanna get parked in because I'm in and I'm out. So if, if I'm going to something that I think is a garage sale, yeah, I'm gonna park on the road right-of-way. So I think, um, you know, the signage would be really important because it wouldn't be or shouldn't be billed as a garage sale anymore.
Right.
Um, and, and I think that will help just in and of itself. And then when you're pulling into the property, then proper signage on your property directing people where to go once they come in your driveway, I think would be, would be better than putting it on the county Public Works Department to, you know, keep people from parking, you know, in that right-of-way.
Yeah, I agree. And that's where I got with a business instead of a garage sale. That's, so, one of the questions I had already was answered, but by having a, uh, times that you're open, you know? That, that helps with the, the garage sale per se feel of it going away. So that was one of the questions that was already asked. Employees was asked. Um, how about restrooms? You know, that's, that's also occurring with the septic system and all that, so...
So we have a porta potty outside.
Okay. Okay, and then employees was asked. Okay, and if we were, if we were gonna go through with this, um, application, we have to have an end date. So have you given any thought if this would go through, what you would want for an end date?
Probably.
It could be when you sell the property or whatever, I mean...
Yes, as long as I live at the property.
Okay, until you sell it? Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Well, there'll be some more after I get public comment because I think the biggest thing is, um, trying to get through for, to appease neighbors and then also just the, like Dave stated, maybe to stay in harmony with the rural residential area and things like that. So, so maybe once we get some of the public comment and get some feel for that, we'll have some more, but I'm good at this time.
Mr. Chair. I've got a couple more questions if I could, please.
Let Amy go quick and then you.
I, Mr. Chair, I just, I had a question that I think, you know, we, we have the shopping side of it, but then we also have the stocking side of it, so the donations. Um, and I think that that is probably just as frequent, probably. So, so my question would be, um, if you went to these hours, is, is that the timeframe in which you would be accepting donations as well? So everything happening would be between those business hours? So someone showing up with a donation at whatever time?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, there's always an exception, you know? Some of my volunteers that will go out and pick for, pick up furniture, do that after their regular jobs. So I have to take that back, that I can't guarantee that would all happen during those hours because it's dependent on when they can run out and get things too.
And Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Have you had any issue with people just dropping stuff without you being there or discovering that you have a donation?
Well, sure, there's a box or two sitting there, but nobody has ever brought big furniture and, and just dropped it off there. But, you know, if I have to send my nephew or other people out to get stuff, that's probably gonna happen after their regular hour jobs. So, but traditionally, they come in when we're there. It's not been an issue.
So you'd say ninety percent?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Marv.
Okay, Julie, I, I think it's quite admirable and I think your neighbors and all know what you're doing. It's quite admirable. But if this wouldn't be approved, do you have a second location or a second location that probably the garage sale could possibly work? Because you talked about the first one being right, right in town up Broadway.
Well, you know, the, the issue is expense. You know, if I'm gonna do the charitable work is how do you afford to purchase a building or, um, renovate it to be what you need? If I was a nonprofit and we could pursue those types of funds? I was on the, on the Boys and Girls Club when we started that and it was part of cleaning out that old building and making, making that a goal. It's a lot of work, you know? Here to have something on my own property was, was something we could just keep going since the momentum was already there that, that we're distributing, so, no, I think that would be very prohibitive for, for cost and space and...
Okay, so you don't at this time?
I do not have a backup plan.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is maybe, uh, Amy has for later on. Usually we have a township or county response to that. Uh, will you be giving something later on?
Mr. Chair, we did notify the township of this request and we also, the county engineer, um, was also notified. I did not receive any comment from, uh, from the township or the county engineer regarding this request. So I don't have any comment from either one.
Okay, thank you.
Just hold on.
So, Mr. Chair, it appears that there is someone from the township that can speak to that when you open it up.
If you just hold on, we'll get to you, but thank you.
Want me to go back to my seat?
Nope, you stay there.
I stay there.
You're locked in.
All right.
You have anything else, Marv?
No, no, I don't. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now I will open it to public comment, okay? The way it'll work is you guys can come up for three minutes or so and, uh, state whatever you gotta state, um, just kinda one at a time. Um, when you, you have to go up to the podium and speak in the microphone and please state your name so we have it on the record and then go into, uh, whatever you guys wanna say. And then if you address it to me or if you have a question of us board, direct them to me and we'll, uh, when it's all over, I won't probably get into it, maybe with the township, but the public, you guys have questions, we write them down. When everybody's done speaking, we'll answer them questions as best as we can, okay? So that's how it works. So probably we'll just start off being, we have a member from Green Prairie Township, if you just would like to go up and, go ahead.
Dan Maslowski, Green Prairie Township Supervisor. I live north of there, so I go through there almost daily. I know last summer there was a lot of pretty close calls I've seen myself going through there. You know, I'm not against the, the supervisors weren't against the business, but, you know, it's a residential area. You know, I can't, you know? Matt over there, you know, it's a neighborhood residential area. You got people coming through all the time, noise, you know, all the issues. So that's about all I got.
Okay, anybody have any questions for, uh, Dan Beany's up there? If not, thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and give any public comment? Go ahead and feel free to come up to the microphone. Any more public comment?
Oh, did you wanna make a public comment? Are you making, go to the podium, please?
My name is Justin Paul Bertschel. New resident here in Morrison County. I'm originally from Pequot Lakes. And, uh, we lived on Sibley Lake and, uh, also residential area, very public, very private. I tried to keep up with the litter and stuff, um, because I wanted, I just wanted, um, some privacy and stuff out there. I think we're pretty, it's pretty close. This place is located pretty close into town. I, I know Ju- Julie because, um, uh, we lost our home up in Pequot Lakes and, uh, ended up here homeless. And I'm not here to test like how big a heart she has because we, you know, we probably all know it. But, um, she gave me a foundation. When I didn't have a foundation, I had four tubs. And it took a while to get placed in an apartment. I had four tubs of clothing. I didn't have cooking utensils, nothing. But, um, she gave me a foundation, like, a bed, stuff to eat my food. Like, hope that maybe I could be a part of this community, um, without the family that I've lost or don't have with me here. What I've noticed, um, I've, 'cause I've, uh, been volunteering with Julie, um, to help, you know, weed through some of this, uh, 'cause there's something gravitate me towards it. It is a good thing. I get it. I get it that, um, you want, um, privacy, um, in, at your home that you pay for, um. What I noticed when I first went out to Julie's was, um, a ranky old garage sale sign. Something that, you know, I don't really like to see, but you know what else I seen was a beautiful home? There was no clutter in the front yard. There's a bunch of clutter. You drive down, uh, town here, I mean, people got crap stacked up in the yard. Jungle dens for their cats, but, um, uh, I didn't notice any clutter. It was really private. It was a country home. There were horses to the left. There was no noise. The, the structural buildings were all in the back. Um, there was a lot of parking. And, um, I don't know, uh, I get it. There's gotta be a happy medium here. I would not wanna live on a road where you got people parking and you gotta squeeze in, in between that, no way, no way in heck. There's gotta be other signs out there or something maybe to reduce speed then for residential area. And even maybe like, uh, I get the garage sale sign is probably not appropriate. So maybe just, uh, you know, uh, what the, the name of the business is, um, or the nonprofit, I should say, that's what it mostly is right now. And I don't know how Salvation Army and Goodwill Easter still started out. I've worked for both of them. I don't know how they started out, but this is kinda, you know, it's a little town. And, um, she's helping exhaust some, some of the overflow from, from people flooding in from the epidemic or they don't wanna work and they come in for county assistance and this and that. She helps with that overflow. So there, there ain't so many people coming here. And I just wish the best and I'm gonna, uh, keep plugging away. And, uh, I don't know, I just hope that there's a happy medium, 'cause I do understand it. I don't know if maybe a better sign, a more appropriate sign, um, says no parking under it, real fancy-like, maybe privacy fence. I don't know, but I don't, 'cause I haven't been out there to where the traffic's been bad. Every time I go out, it's sporadic. It's a car here and there, um, but, but I get it.
Okay, thank you. Whoever's next, go ahead. State your name for the record, please.
I'm Rebecca Fullford. Can you hear me? I'm Rebecca Fullford, uh, as Julie refers to me as the... I'm Rebecca Fullford and as Julie refers to me as the neighbor to the north. Our property's adjoining. I haven't been there very much this winter, Julie, because I've had some water damage over there and you've probably seen the workmen. So we've got a new floor. We've done a lot of remodeling in the house. And I have a health condition that makes me spend my winters in Colorado. So I'm back now. And I was kind of shocked to see so many buildings and so many trucks and trailers in the backyard of my neighbor. I'm not against what Julie's doing. She has a lot of good intentions for helping people, I think. But it's not so much what she's doing, it's where she's doing it. This is zoned for rural, residential, not for small business or industrial. And I think she has both going on there. So that's basically all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
But it's my retreat and if it's going to be six days a week, you know, when's the retreat? I like to, my place is a gathering place for my friends and family. And I have a big, open yard. When she has garage sales, people drive across my yard and down my driveway. I go out there and wave to them. They don't care. They come right up the driveway and over to the other side. I just think that's really rude. And I know Julie's tried to tell them not to do that, but it's just not a lot of fun being next door. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Crowder. Just wanted, she said most of it already, but I just wanted to really, really, we're all for Julie, for what she does. You know, it's great to have things like that around. They help people. The only problem I got is that it's in the wrong location. We're in residential, country homes, and I don't want all the noise. And if we're going to have people either working or volunteering, it don't matter, there's more people. I just, I don't know, I just, I like peace and quiet. Been out there for forty years. Kind of like to leave it that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Rose Sirma. I'm with Oasis Central Minnesota. And I'll make it brief because I know it sounds like, we've kind of touched on this. We serve people that are both housing insecure without housing and Julie's program has just been really wonderful to work with. She's able to, I think Justin mentioned, set people up with their cooking utensils, bedding, a place to sleep. So it's been a really important asset to our community in that way. It's also been really helpful. We get calls all of the time with people with couches, beds, like large donation items that they want to get out into our community to people who need them. And without her program, we don't have a way to do that. We don't, our organization doesn't have the storage. And I don't know of any other in the area that gives away that would be able to take it. So it's been just really a way, as I think Justin said, to just give people a firm foundation to have a, to start over and have some stability, so.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Ock. I'm from Hands of Hope Resource Center. And I just want to reiterate what Rose said. We have, we work with victims of domestic violence particularly that have been helped by Julie. We get a lot of requests for donations as well and we don't have anywhere to put them. And so when we have victims in need, we send them Julie's way and she's been able to help them out. And there was another similar person helping people out that was working with those under eighteen and got a lot of support from that group. And she had since closed her doors and Julie's been able to help all ages, not just those that were adults, which is previously what she was doing. I don't know what the answer is and I know that you're looking at the land issue. I just wanted to speak to the need piece.
Any other public comment? I'll ask it three times before I close. Is there any more public comment? Any more public comment? If not hearing any, we'll close this portion of the public hearing, the public comment portion of it. We'll close that down. So now I'll move over to if the staff or any of the planning commission board has any more things to add, questions or comments. Before we move on to our questions, go ahead, Mr. Stish.
Okay, you've heard the comments. You've heard our input. I'm still in the position that I would answer no to each one of the criteria questions if your business were to run as it has been. Do you have any proposals that would allow me to answer yes to any of these questions or some of these questions or all of them? Like time of operation, referral, I mean, limiting your business to something manageable?
I'm a little bit confused. So at this point, you would say no, that this is not okay?
Correct. That's what I would say right now. Do you have a proposal that would allow me to answer yes to any of the questions?
The parking issue is, will be resolved because parking will be back behind the house. And I think that the visual noise of me having a garage sale out in front of my front double garage is going to be taken care of because now everything is contained within buildings. And I think a noise concern of people shopping outside with things placed outdoors for a garage sale is going to be taken care of because everything is inside this building and then I have another building with the furniture in. And then we have the third building with the books in. So people will be shopping indoors. So I really, I think that the visual noise and people noise. I don't, I don't think people noise has ever been much. That has never, I mean, not something I was ever aware of. The neighbor's concern about somebody driving on her yard, that did happen and I put up a sawhorse to prevent that. And I think that that concern of anybody trespassing from the front yard where the land just is lawn on each side where in the back there's a huge hedge and the building kind of defines those boundaries. So I'm hoping that having it in the back resolves the parking issue, the safety issue. You know, and I just, I'm just not aware of a noise issue, but maybe from vehicles. I'm not sure. But I certainly want this to be a peaceful neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Marv, you have anything else?
Well, I was thinking about a few conditions, just to, one would obviously be the parking and not allowing anything in the road. That's hours of operation would be other one. Other item would be, is I'm very concerned about what it's doing to the neighborhood. I think we all admire what's happening for what the better good it's doing. But after allowing a permit maybe for one year and reviewing and rehearing and see what the feel of the neighborhood would be after that, after everything would be taken care of. Something that I'm seeing with the rest of the board members are how they digest that or how they feel about that at this moment.
We'll have to stew on that one for a minute. Brent, you have anything?
I guess back to the parking, that seems to be of real concern here on the roadway out front, both for the motoring traffic that uses that road and parking in the back. I don't know, Amy, if we can go back to that overview of the yard. I just want to make sure that in my mind, I'm understanding where this turnaround is and where there would be room for parking. And maybe Julie, if you could let me know where it is by pointing or telling us where exactly you anticipate vehicles to not be on the road, but to be, you know, utilizing the yard.
Right here is Cross Road. Last year I had the sale right here in front of this garage. The new building is in the very back corner of my lot, across from the back end of the pole barn. Right across from that is the new building and we've taken down trees here. So we have substantial parking there and even in front of the pole barn, which is a ways away from the road. It'd make no sense for anybody to park here and drive in because if this works, what I would do is direct people back. And, you know, they can't even see the building from the road, so they would be directed back. I think signage would be critical. But here, you know, they could see the garage sale parked on the road, but I did have, you know, a lot of people that parked on the lawn. But no matter what I did, it was still happening. And this would take care of that by having them parked in the back.
And while you're still up there, can you show me the drive because it's covered by foliage and trees here? How you would get back there to that?
I have two driveways. One driveway goes up to the double car garage and the other driveway comes up behind the house. So traffic would be directed this way. You know, I would like to use, put up the permanent sign, whatever the dimensions are, and then there would be signage with arrows.
So they would drive to the left of the house to get back to that shed?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Miss, go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, that was the one issue on parking. I wanted to understand that a little bit better. I'm still a little hung up, Julie, on the incidental. I mean, this is basically, it's turned into a commercial operation and in a residential area, four days a week and one day on a weekend, five days a week, basically, is what you're proposing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Are you inclined to limit that in any way and/or the hours of operation to address some of the concerns that have been raised by either those that have written in by email or letter or spoken here today?
And, you know, Saturdays, I mean, we do not have to be open on Saturdays. We could drop that and do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, I think that would be a way to, say, if family is having weekend get-togethers, that there's just not going to be activity. But if there's other things I need to consider, absolutely will, you know. But maybe that would be a win-win is drop the Saturday.
Okay, Brent, any more?
Along with those days and hours of operation, hours of operation still the same?
Well, one of the things that I heard when I tried to run shorter hours is that what about those of us that don't get off work until three, four, five o'clock? You know, can you accommodate us to come in later? So, you know, if we limit the hours, I would like a little flexibility to serve those individual referrals that would come after hours. You know, if you want us to close at four, we sure can do that.
For those referrals, could those referrals be by appointment then, outside of normal operation?
Yeah, I think we just, we have to accommodate them. They've had enough roadblocks. Let's accommodate them to get what they need.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
I just want to build on what Brent is asking as far as, so right now, when you have a referral, those families are mingling with shopping people, with paying shopping people? So I was just wondering, you know, if you were splitting like, okay, our referrals are by appointment and they have access to the place to shop and in their own, you know, in a little bit of privacy actually, to be able to do their thing. And then these are the hours that the general public can come. Have you thought of that sort of business model?
No, because one of the things I really want to do is promote some dignity. So say a family of five comes out and I'm told that they are really hard on their, you know, I'll just tell them, see what you can pick out for seventy-five dollars. If they want to pick out five fifteen-dollar pair of jeans or seventy-five one-dollar items, I'm fine with that. But they bring it up just like their paying customer. I bag it up, wish them well. So no, I want this to be dignified and not that they're getting, you know, they get to come shop for what they need and not have to pay. So I don't want to segregate that.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, Mr. Brucher.
Yeah, you brought something to light that I didn't, you know, not really aware that there was as much need out there as what there is. And, you know, I really appreciate that. Looking down the road is that what would your business plan be? You know, because as I see it, you know, the need is not going to shrink. You know, if anything, you know, people are always going to be in need. And what you've got out there, you probably won't be able to serve all the need that's out there. Long-term for a business plan, if you get registered as a nonprofit, are there grants available that might allow you to move someplace else? You know, I mean, realistically, you know, the amount of people that you need to serve and where you're located, you're doing a wonderful thing and you got a big heart. But I mean, in the, from a business standpoint, what would your long-term business plan be?
Well, I would see, the first thing, you know, I kind of stopped thinking about the nonprofit, for-profit, all of that. Is let's get through this conditional use process. And then the next step would be creating a nonprofit status. And then once I have that, I could sit down with the Initiative Foundation and, you know, get their direction. Because this is, this is a Morrison County need. I think that their housing support, my understanding is housing support services that they used to contract for stopped when the pandemic started. So even what the county has relied on is just dried up. So I think the county has to be looking at what do they need to do for their vulnerable population with housing support. And I think we need to look at with the Initiative Foundation, how do we support Hands of Hope and Oasis and some of these other programs? Because we can't expect them to be successful if we're not supporting them. So I would see working with the Initiative Foundation, and I think this should be a huge building accessible downtown that, you know, I'm going to help launch, just like I did the Boys and Girls Club in town, and then we turn it over to a board and let it run. So I do see this as a seed. I think I might always, as long as I'm living there, have a role. But I think this should be the same as New To You with a twist.
Yeah, that's, you answered my question because as I see it, you know, the long-term future of you handling all the needs out of your location there is probably not practical.
Right.
And so, you know, I wanted to see what, you know, is working out, you know, and I think there's a lot of people that have a big heart. I mean, I know we've been involved in some charity things and there's, people have big hearts. I think there's a, there's a real reason to support this, but maybe, you know, get a business plan together for something that is not, you know, that's more harmonious with what's, where you're at. Thank you.
Right. And I want to solid remember too, this is a hundred-year pandemic we're in. And, you know, my thought was I'm going to provide some relief services during the pandemic. But then we went into this heightened inflation and rent skyrocketing and all of these other things. So it's made it real evident in my mind that this isn't a relief service for the pandemic, that what I'm touching on is a huge need that we need to address as a county.
Okay, thank you. You're good, Dave? Okay, we'll try, I got a couple of things real quick, try and move along here, but I think it'll help me. One thing, would you be willing to put up a fence in between you and your one neighbor to help from cars going over to the neighbors? One thing, would you be willing to put up a fence in between you and your one neighbor to help from, um, cars going over to the neighbors?
Well, there's already a hedge.
Okay.
There's a hedge in trees on that part of the yard and, and if I need to, I have some storage trailers. I can turn them along the way too, but I think there's enough barriers that that's not a concern in the backyard.
Okay. So then let's say you were willing to go Tuesday through Friday, the nine to five or whatever, and drop Saturday. Um, you get most of your deliveries and things ninety percent, you think, during them business hours? Um, and then let's say we let you go after hours for like, let's say an emergency. Let's say somebody's house burns down and they come after hours to get some clothes or whatever. I think that's fine with everybody other than just people coming and going all the time, you know, so, so I, that's just something I just wanted to run by you. If that would be something that would entice you or if we're going to move forward.
Yeah, it would. I would like to make the exception with the volunteers coming to help me organize, you know, that, that I really wouldn't want their hours limited because, you know, we need to do work behind the scenes when it's shopping. But yes, yes.
Well, I know with Dave's concerns and some of the questions we ask, just so everybody knows, you know, up the road from all you guys, you probably don't even know it. Mile or two up the road, there's a guy that, uh, does embroidery and it's in his house, so he don't really have to have a permit, so we don't really know about it. But any given day, I'll guarantee he has more people coming in and out of his house than you do and none of you guys even know it. Um, I think the garage sale thing with the people on the road and all that, it just put a bad taste in your neighborhood's mouth. Um, I think that's where a lot of this stuff is driven from. So if we clean that up, I think that helps the neighbors somewhat, not totally. But I think it eases the pain a little bit. So with that, we're just going to move forward here. We're going to go to the questions unless, Amy, you had something. I seen you grab the mic.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to remind you because this is, this is, um, an interim use permit. It's a land use right that is given. However, interim use permits function a little bit differently than conditional use permits. And, and the, the biggest difference is that you have to put an end date on it. Typically it's an, you know, really you're, you, you have been granting those in perpetuity almost until someone no longer owns the property. This is one where you may want to exercise your ability to, hey, we're going to let you try this on for a year or two. And we're going to see how big this gets. If you're able to control the traffic, if you're, you know, how many near misses do, have we had? Give her an opportunity to get those signs up, direct the traffic and everything, but, but also have the ability to revisit it and say, not working, you know? Um, and so I just want to remind you that this is exactly why you, this use is under an interim use permit and not a conditional use permit. So I just, you know, so I think having some discussion, you know, and this really, what that does is that gives people the opportunity to try this out, but it's not painting anyone into a corner of having to, to, to work with something that truly is not fitting or working or ha- is going to or will outgrow that area. So I just wanted you to keep that in mind as you're voting and as you're thinking about conditions.
Thank you for the comments, Amy. That's what I was kind of thinking in my head when Marv mentioned that. I just wanted to settle on it for a little bit, but, uh, one thing, if they, let's say we were to go to a year, that they have the full cost of doing this all over again and all them things?
So right now it depends on how you would word it. So, um, the interim use permit generally, um, you know, you're going to, you're going to say when that sun sets or when it expires. Um, you could build in there where there's a one-year review in between and then, uh, you know, and then that would just come before the county board. Or it would be reheard here. So you can structure that differently, but yes, I mean, if, if we're going to hold a public hearing again, yes, there would be another public.
But if we just did a review through the board, we could do that, right?
You can, however, the board would be very limited in their ability to amend anything. So, so the, the long and short answer is you can build two different things. You can build a one-year review or review at some point. But if you want to hold the ability to be able to, uh, renew the, the interim use permit, then yes, you would put the end date on and there would be an application for, uh, for another one.
Okay, thank you. How's the board feel? Do you guys find with, uh, well, what do you guys think on a year? Would that help you guys in these questions? That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Um, I think it would be helpful for me to answer some of these questions. Before we answer these questions, to kind of have an idea of some of the conditions that might be placed on. One is obviously the, uh, uh, the end date. Two is a parking. Three is signage. Um, four is the incidental, uh, use of this, uh, hours and days of operation. Uh, no weekend hours of operation. I think that helps, uh, differentiate between the business and a garage sale. Uh, for many folks because garage sales are typically on a weekend. Um, so, and then all indoor operations as well. So it was some of the things that I had jotted down that were concerning to me moving forward. I'd kind of like to have those in my understanding when we go through the questions.
Okay. You guys feel kind of the same? Okay. How would that, how do you feel about that? Would you be open to a one-year trial?
Well, you know, not that I have to pay all these fees.
I know, but I think it would probably appease the neighbors to prove that this is how it's going to be or, I, I understand that, I know. But I hate to, well, that's your decision. Um, if you'd rather, uh, have the chance of it. Well, we don't know how we're going to vote, but having a more of a chance of it being a no than maybe a yes, um, to go for a year.
Is there, um, is there any provisions that our conditional use permits ever just reviewed naturally without having to go through all these steps?
No. Okay, well, how, you just think on a while. We're going to go through these questions. At the end, we're going to give a thing for denial or recommend for approval. We'll probably have some conditions on it. At that time, you'll hear it all, whatever we come up with and i- if it does go through, it'll have to go to commissioners to get voted. In that meantime, if that don't suit you, then you won't have it. You can make that decision, right?
Mr. Chair, so the planning commission is going to vote on these criteria questions. And one of the things, uh, that they need to do is if their answer to any of these questions would be a no, they need to consider conditions that would make that a yes. Okay? So that's what they're trying to go through right now. So they'll, they'll keep those conditions in mind as they vote. Okay? And then after that, they're going to shake out what their recommendation is going to be to cut to the county board. So tonight, you're going to know what the recommendation to the county board is and the conditions that they're recommending. When the county board gets it next week, then, no, they have a planning session in a couple of weeks, then they're going to consider everything they heard at the hearing, the, the recommendation of the planning commission. And, and they have the ability to grant, deny, change up those conditions, anything like that. So, so this is just kind of that first, that recommendation stage. Make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree. I agree with Brent stated. I have a hard time voting one way or another here without the conditions laid out at first.
Yep. So we want to lay them out first?
So, Mr. Chair, should we just go through, um, each one? Um, you know, I think Brent kind of gave the list of the things at least that he would be looking to condition in order to do that. So should we just bite off?
Yep, let's go through it real quick and so we can go in here.
All right, so parking.
What we have, yep.
So parking, what I'm hearing is that parking, uh, must be off-street, must be, you know, on, onsite and not within the right of way?
Yes, that's correct.
And adequately signed to direct.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Maybe something, uh, in the, in the framework of, uh, parking in the rear all, uh, on the signage, you know, parking in the rear and directing people that.
Yep.
Yes, so what I said, inadequately signed to direct, um, on the property. All right. Is every, does that, um, cover everyone's concerns for parking? Okay. Uh, indoor operation? So, um, all, all donations and all business activities shall be, um, conducted within the accessory buildings of the property?
No outdoor displays or?
Okay. No outdoor display? All storage within buildings? Okay?
And then business hours Tuesday through Friday, nine to five?
Business hours?
Except for emergencies.
So Tuesday through Friday, nine to five, all of you are in agreement that?
Uh, that that's an acceptable condition or?
Correct, like that if you were voting and that was the condition?
You know, I guess I'm, I'm not really for this whole process of trying to build a, uh, business for her. She's, um, heard our concerns. I asked her, she came back with really nothing. Um, we could, hold on, I'm, uh, we, we could spend the rest of the night framing her business for her, that what might be acceptable, uh, that might be a condition that could be, could allow us to answer yes. In my mind, she's, there's, there's a big problem here with, um, the, um, you know, the nonprofit part of it and the for-profit part of it. The nonprofit part of it would be easy to condition by appointments only, uh, both for drop-off and pickup, uh, by referrals. Eliminate the for-profit part of it. If you're going to have the for-profit part of it, boy, one or two days a week for limited hours, that would be the only thing that I would be, say would allow us to answer these questions positively. And again, I don't know if we have time to frame that. We've already been an hour and a half at this. Um, we've got two more items on the agenda for tonight. I don't think she was really prepared for giving us reasons to answer yes tonight, so. What's everybody else's thought?
My initial thought, Mr. Chair, was, uh, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or some combination thereof, but I think three days a week. Uh, not, not anymore.
Mr. Chair.
Brucher.
I would agree with Brent. I think we, I think we could proceed with the conditions that have been stated here.
The only other one, Mr. Chair, would be the end date.
Marv, what do you think about the hours of operation?
I, I think, uh, the three days, I could, uh, go with that, but I mean, as far as hours of operation, I think that would be adequate. And then as Dave stated, if it would be nonprofit, uh, they, by appointment, I think that could be taken care by that. But as far as I, uh, I can't support this without having, uh, more than a one-year review and seeing how that goes. If, otherwise I think we're really opening up a real can of worms here.
Anybody against the one year? Okay.
So we'll put that on there.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other conditions that would help them?
What were the hours you suggested?
What I have written down is three days a week, uh, nine AM to five PM.
I'd be more comfortable with nine to four or nine to three. Nine to five gets into the backyard, uh, pretty quickly of the neighbors.
Then I would, would ask that you make it eight, eight open, you know, if you'll.
Say it again?
At eight.
Oh, eight AM?
Eight.
Oh, got it. Okay.
You know, if you made it close at four, make it eight to four.
Okay, we, we got to also remember these are recommendations to the commissioners and they could fine tune us. They're, they're much smarter. They have more time than we do.
Yep.
They're paid more.
Okay, well, we got our conditions, so we're just going to move into the questions. We got to go on here, so. Question one, um, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. I'll start with Dave Brucher.
Yes, it will not. Yes, it will not if we, uh, apply the conditions as we have here with the parking, the signage, um, new outdoor displays. I think that I can vote yes on that one with the conditions. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I think with, uh, moving the parking in the back, I mean, we ain't talking about a thousands of cars going on the road all day. It's still a public road. Um, as far as the utilities, nothing's going to really change, so, um, yeah, I kind of agree with, what Mr. Brucher said. Brent, do you have anything to comment on that?
No, I'll pass.
Okay. Dave Stish?
Uh, even, even with the off-road parking, um, fifteen cars isn't very much, um, and without restrictions, uh, I'm, I'm thinking it's still going to be an excessive burden to the, uh, to the neighborhood, just the flow of traffic, even on the fewer days and fewer hours.
Okay, Marvin?
Uh, it's, as it's County Road two thirteen, it's, it's traveled a fair amount and as I agree with Brucher's comments like that, if the proper signage and everything set up and as we put one-year conditions on, um, see how it goes if that works. I could probably vote in favor for that reason.
Okay. So question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. So for me to say yes on this one, um, I look at, um, no cars on the road, parking up in our yard, um, with the one-year, um, review, um, at that time, maybe, maybe there has to be some fencing so neighbors can't see at that time or whatever, but I, I think, uh, I think it would ease a lot of the pain for the neighborhood. Um, so to me, I don't know that it'd be that detrimental. So I, I think with some of the conditions that we have, I, I just think it's still a property. Um, it's allowed, it's allowed through an interim use permit. Um, I guess my biggest thing was to be real detrimental to the community or the area was the traffic on the road and them cars on there and safety should be number one. So we kind of addressed that. So I'll move on to Brent.
Um, for me, you know, this would be a no without all of the conditions, um, because you are somewhat putting commercial use in a residential area and it would be, and we've heard from folks here and through emails and written form that it, that it is somewhat detrimental, but with the conditions imposed, um, I think that's been negated.
Dave Stish?
Okay, there are, um, home extended business standards. Um, we got to remember that this is, um, rural residential. These are two and a half acre lots. These are, uh, residents are very close to each other. Um, it is residential in nature. Uh, we're, we apply the same rules, the same standards to, to the ag zone where properties are typically, you know, five acres at the very least or much more in most cases. And, uh, the residents are farther apart. Um, the rural nature of ag can be, um, can be maintained with extended home business. The residential nature of this zone, I don't think can be maintained with the, uh, sta- the, um, conditions that are, uh, added on, even with the conditions that are added on. So, um, it would be detrimental to the enjoyment and use of the neighbors even with these conditions.
Uh, Marvin?
I'm, um, this really concerns me too, but I, I agree with Brent mainly here, what he had stated about with the conditions. And I, I, as things proceed, we talked about this could be outgrown. And that's why I say we can't let this allow, uh, be allowed more than one year because if it ends up being, um, it is detrimental. I think we're tittering on both ways on this, that we are infringing on a rural residential area as a business. But as But as, um, I think a lot of us would like to see this business continue. And I'm thinking, we're hoping that it eventually moves into a town or a place where it's more fitting. Um, and that's why, that one-year time, see how it goes, maybe things will back off and, uh, uh, things will be, uh, set up there, but we, we'll see how this all goes. And I, I, uh, with the conditions, I can vote yes, but otherwise, there's no way.
Dave Brucher?
I think Marv addressed it, uh, directly, I think it's very clear, I agree with him, that, uh, I think with the one-year, see, let's see how we can make this work, and, uh, with one-year, I can vote yes on this, thank you.
Okay, question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and then environment, groundwater, surface water, air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. We'll start with Brent.
Um, I heard, um, Julie talk about there being one satellite restroom out there. Um, I'm wondering if, uh, maybe we don't need to, uh, address that somewhere along the, the way here as well, as far as a condition. Other than that, uh, I, I don't know that groundwater, air quality, uh, would be affected. But, uh, if you're gonna have hours of operation and people coming, um, maybe there needs to be more than just one satellite there.
Dave Stish?
Uh, the existing land use is rural residential, um, so the commercial component of this does not relate well to that. And it's not a reasonable use in this area. Um, how groundwater, surface water and air quality are affected? Um, I guess it depends on, um, how comfortable you are with a parking lot right next to your house. Uh, I'm talking about the neighbors. There's, uh, fluids leak from vehicles, um, your groundwater is my groundwater. Your air quality is my air quality as a neighbor.
Okay, Marvin?
Well, uh, here, there were, th- this is another one in, um, items that I can't clearly vote yes or no on this one. And, uh, as Dave pointed out, um, there could be some, uh, real issues, uh, that could be happening. And that's why I said I'd look at this as a one-year deal and see how it's going. Uh, could it be, uh, affecting groundwater? Uh, well, if they drove the vehicle there, sure, there could be a little oil. Obviously, it's, they, they shouldn't have oil running all over the place. Uh, there, I don't believe, uh, if you had them parking on the lawns before, they didn't, uh, burn holes in your lawn that was there. It, it really wasn't a problem, and i- if the traffic, um, gets larger, you can't fit them in the parking lot, and it is a problem, it probably will not be extending to the following year.
Dave Brucher?
I have to vote yes on this one, I think you really have to reach to find a reason that it's going to affect the environment, groundwater, surface water and air quality, I vote yes.
Okay, I have no comment on this one. Um, nothing else to add, I guess. Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use, Dave Stish?
Well, I, I earlier read the purpose of the zoning district, the rural residential district, and, um, a definition of an extended home business and how it relate. And we need to apply that rural, or definition of a r- extended home business to rural residential, not to ag. We need to apply it to rural residential. And, um, with the model that, um, she's proposing and even with the conditions, um, it is, uh, not consistent with the purposes of, uh, the zoning district.
Marvin?
Well, uh, something I wanna point out that you, you had Brent, or excuse me, Clint, you had mentioned about the embroidery place just down the road, another business just down the road, Mike Schuett has got his taxidermy shop, uh, and it's real close by too. Uh, and if you remember, um, a few, a few years previous, just a little bit south, there used to be a business, uh, that I believe they sold homes and whatever contractor, and that, uh, uh, is no longer there. So, uh, there were businesses around, were they right next door? No, but they're fairly close.
I tracked you, Marv, that was a fireplace place.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave Brucher?
Yeah, you know, when we put it all in the perspective of the other, uh, businesses that we've approved, I don't think that this one is any really different or should be categorized or treated differently than some of the other things that we've approved, so I say yes.
Um, all I'd add is I kinda agree with Marv with some of the other things that have been around that area. They were right out by the road, this is off the road a ways, that's all I'd probably add to that. Um, Brent, you have anything for question four to add?
Uh, nothing further, Chair.
Okay, question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county, Marvin?
Well, something I'm gonna go and read, uh, objective one of our local economic, uh, development, uh, objective one, call attention to Morrison County Physical and Human Resources as a business attraction tool to promote Morrison County and its communities as a desirable county for businesses to start up and relocate. And another one is to, uh, supports effort, goal C1 is to support and build strong and, uh, variety, a varied local economy that provides adequate employment opportunities and access to these goods and services needed by the county residents. That's a point of needed, so this, I think that was very well addressed earlier.
Okay, thank you, Dave Brucher?
I have no, nothing further to comment on this.
I have nothing further, um, like, uh, Marv stated, if you read, um, kinda how you interpret, I guess, the goals or the objectives, I kinda agree with what he stated. Um, Brent, do you have anything for number five?
Nothing further.
Dave Stish?
Uh, gotta remember, um, Land Services doesn't have a crew of police out there policing the, the ordinance. Uh, it's all complaint-driven. Um, if I refer you to the timeline of events here, August twenty-one, a permit for personal storage was applied for. A permit for personal storage was applied for. By October, October twenty-one, there were complaints already, uh, complaints to Land Services. Uh, for some reason, a letter didn't get to you until March, um, with an April one deadline. Things have moved along fairly quickly then, since then, you've addressed the concerns in the letter, you're here at a meeting tonight. Complaint-driven, there's no complaints, um, you know, the, the ones you referred to have no real bearing on tonight's decision. We're, do these one case at a time, we know nothing about their conditions, we don't know if they're an ag or rural residential or where they are. Maybe they're even in commercial, I don't know. Uh, again, it's, every situation is unique, and we're looking at this unique situation. And if it, again, the question here, is it in conflict with a comprehensive plan? Um, Marv, you did read off some objectives that were met, and I can come back with, in the staff report, um, encourage these businesses where they will not create a necessarily, unnecessary conflict. Uh, limit areas to areas capable of handling such development with adequate infrastructure and services. Services include policing, uh, road patrols, um, kind of a remote, this is a rural residential area, very quiet, supposed to be. It has a speed limit even, uh, that's lower than it used to be. Mitigate impacts of, uh, of the, uh, commercial development. Um, reduce impacts of legal non-conforming businesses. Um, best, businesses that are best suited for rural settings, this is rural residential. Um, the nature of this business is not suited to rural residential. So, you know, I'm all for businesses, I'm all for what's trying to be accomplished tonight. The applicant does not have a good model for allowing us to permit this.
Okay, thank you.
Are you sure?
Yes, no, it's good. Um, I believe we have four of our commissioners either here or on the computer, so I think that they need to hear both sides of this thing and our, our arguments back and forth, I think it's good dialogue, so, um, thank you. So we'll go, uh, right to the questions and vote, you guys ready for that?
Yes.
Okay, we're voting. Question one, the use, the use will not put excess of burdens on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools, Dave Brucher?
With the conditions, yes.
Myself is yes, Brent?
Um, yes.
Dave Stish?
No.
Marv Tretel?
Yes.
Okay, question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant area. Um, myself, with the conditions, myself is yes, Brent?
Yes.
Dave Stish?
No.
Marv Tretel?
Yes.
Dave Brucher?
Yes.
Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related, um, to the existing land use and environment, groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use, Brent?
Uh, with this one, um, yes, if there's multiple satellites for restroom. Uh, we didn't quite address that for a condition, but I think that would need to be a condition.
Okay. Uh, Dave Stish?
No.
Marv Tretel?
With the conditions, yes.
Dave Brucher?
Yes.
Uh, myself is yes with, uh, we'll get to Brent's extra condition, but. Number four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the application tends, intends to locate, um, the proposed use, Dave Stish?
No.
Marv Tretel?
Yes.
Dave Brucher?
Yes.
Self is yes, Brent?
Yes.
Okay, question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or water plan of the county, uh, Marv Tretel?
Yes.
Dave Brucher?
Yes.
Myself is yes, Brent?
Yes.
Dave Stish?
No.
Okay, so then I think we'd, we'd like to add on the conditions, um, that we have, what? Two porta-potties, is that how you wanted it stated?
Yes.
Okay.
I would add to that, as long as you're conditioning, um, serviced by a licensed, uh, operator. I assume would be rented from a licensed operator rather than owned, but I don't know that. Whether it's owned or rented, serviced at least by a licensed operator.
Yep, good, good add, Dave. Okay, with them conditions, um, does everybody have a motion to approve or to deny?
Well, the, the, the requested motion would be to approve since all of these were answered in the affirmative.
Okay, so I guess we answered them all in affirmatives, so does anybody have, um, make a motion that we would, uh, approve this for?
The end date, do you actually have an actual date, or you have a one day from, one year from today, what do you have?
He said one year, so we'll go one year from today.
Nope, it would be one day from the year of issue, from the day of issuance. So, when and if the county board were to, uh, were to grant it, it would be one year from that date.
Thank you.
Yep, good verification.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
I would like, uh, to have us, uh, refer the, to approve this to the county commissioners with all the conditions we had stated.
I would second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion made by Marv and seconded by Dave Brucher to, uh, recommend to the commissioners that they approve this. All in favor, say aye, so we'll just go down in order, Dave Sti- Dave Brucher?
Aye.
Uh, Brent Lundgren?
Y- aye.
Marv Tretel?
Aye.
Dave Stish?
Nay.
Clint Catharine, myself is yes. Okay, well, uh, recommend that the commissioner, our recommendation from this board is that the commissioners would approve this. Um, but that's up to them, and when is that date?
And this will be, go before the county board on May tenth, and that's a morning meeting, their meetings start at nine, but I'm never on the agenda first, so.
Do I need to be there?
You do not need to be there, but you absolutely can be there, and I would recommend that you be there because I have a feeling the county board will have some questions for you.
Okay, Annie, if you have anything else, you can, uh, contact Land Services between that time. Okay, thank you very much, excuse. Okay, so now to move on quick, uh, we have our minutes to approve from, uh, March twenty-ninth.
I move, we, that we accept the minutes as presented?
Is there a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the March twenty-ninth minutes, all in favor, just say aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, minutes are approved, any new business?
Mr. Chair, I have none. I have none, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else, no new business, how about old business?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any old business.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Let's second that.
Motion's made in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.